The November 17th, 2015 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner.
Here.
Ms. Jisling.
Present.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Tubb.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone to the November 17th, 2015 regular meeting of the Mentor Exempt Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval by the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Time Warner Cable Channel 96.96 in Mentor and Channel 96.22 in Mentor on the Lake. This meeting is being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV, Mentor, Ohio. Time Warner is working to restore the cable channel at this time. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. Thank you.
And Time Warner did fix that, so we're up.
Yeah, we're up.
Yes.
Good to hear. Next on the agenda, the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tubb.
Yes. Next on the agenda, hearing of the public on agenda items only. Anyone? Mr. Miller, the superintendent's report and recommendations, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A5.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Briner.
Yes.
Ms. Jisling.
Yes.
Mr. Tubb.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board, we have big news tonight. Happy to receive news that Ridge Middle School is going to be recognized, or is recognized, as an Apple Distinguished School. Mr. Shaw, accompanied by Mr. Dwyer and Ms. Blackburn, along with Mr. Shaw, will make the presentation. Accompanied by means follow.[233.87][233.87](Laughter).
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller and Mr. Wilson. Ridge Middle School has a history of instructional innovation, most recently as the original pilot site and first implementation of the district's blended learning program. Through the implementation, Ridge has acted as a beacon for blended learning instruction across the globe with over 200 visits from companies like Apple and Google and school districts from as far away as Saskatchewan, Canada, and Beijing, China. On October 15th, Ridge was named a distinguished school by Apple Incorporated. Apple distinguished schools are selected from schools across the world for having achieved excellence in five distinct areas: visionary leadership, innovative learning and teaching, ongoing professional learning, compelling evidence of success, and flexible learning environments. There are only 300 schools and districts in the world with this designation. Schools that are engaged in these five best practices are innovators in integrating educational technology, leaders in the education community, and enjoy collaborating and sharing their success with other educators who are eager to learn. You can read a little more about Ridge by downloading a featured multi-touch book called Rethinking Education in the iBook Store on your iPads. This is a well-deserved honor for these blended learning pioneers.[313.13][313.13](Applause).
Thank you for the two, to the two of you, but please express our gratitude to the staff at Ridge as well for all of their efforts. And we did check Mrs. Kinsey's schedule tonight, since she was a big part of that, and she is traveling for her new gig, but we do wish her well as well. And to you, Mr. Shaw, too, for your efforts with this launch at Ridge as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to the Ridge staff because it's not easy to be the person who's the point one. In any innovation, it means that you have to take leaps of faith and work extra hard to make it happen. You obviously want to see it to be successful, but at the same time, always doing what's best for the students in your care. So I can't tell you how appreciative we all are of the efforts that you made.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Lynch is going to give us another update on our Straight A Grant initiatives. It's been a couple months since he last updated us.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Miller, Mr. Wilson, I again want to thank you for the opportunity to give you an update on the Straight A Grant. Last year, we updated you on a monthly basis because it was our initial year of the Straight A Grant. This year, in talking with Mr. Miller, we thought we'd update you quarterly. So, you know, just to keep you in the loop of everything and all the changes that are still occurring because of the Straight A Grant, but on a little less frequency, but please know I'm always available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the Straight A Grant. So again, attending all of the board meetings, I'm always impressed by Mr. Wilson and his opportunity to take numbers and make meaning out of them. So tonight, I wanted to do today's, tonight's update with just numbers, and I'm going to try to make meaning out of them like Mr. Wilson does so well every time he talks about numbers. So the first number I want to talk about is the number 107. And as of today, Paradigm has been open 107 days. These days have been very busy, nonstop. We've only had, out of those 107 days, four of them where we have not had a meeting or an event going on in Paradigm, so it's been a very busy place over the first three and a half months. 1,270 are the number of hours of meetings or PD sessions that have occurred in Paradigm. These range from having our staff receiving professional development in areas like today in response to intervention. But there's also been a number of different meetings that go on, whether it's an IP meeting that might need a bigger, a larger venue, or our coaches who meet in there every Friday. So the meetings and PD sessions have totaled 1,270. But an even greater number is 6,970, which is the number of participants in PD sessions and meetings that we've had at Paradigm. From the close to 300 certified staff that we had at the beginning of the year to smaller sessions, this past week, we had 140 teachers, 40 of them from Mentor and 100 from outlying districts receiving professional development and differentiation just this past Friday. So Paradigm has been great, been put to great use, and we've had so many different visitors already to the location. Two more numbers, 9 and 315. And that's how many teachers are in Paradigm every day teaching in the back classrooms and 315 students who are in there every day as well, learning in those classrooms. We have two English teachers, two math teachers, two social studies teachers, one science teacher, one family and consumer science teacher, and one world language teacher, all in that location every single day using that space. And they are doing a fantastic job being there. So far to date, we've had 10 groups that have visited. Those groups include places from our neighbors of Lake Catholic all the way to Kokomo, Indiana, who we had in a few weeks ago. They also include places like Perrysburg and Mayfield and Painesville City Schools. All visitors coming to check out what is going on here in Mentor. And we welcome them to share our excitement and the things that we're doing, but we also use them as learning opportunities to hear some of the things that they're doing in their districts as well. We also tomorrow have Ursuline College joining us, and on Thursday, Antwerp City Schools, which I had never heard of Antwerp before they scheduled a visit with us. So they'll be visiting on Thursday this week. So when you take a look at that, it's almost a visitor every other week. And those visits aren't short stays. Usually sometimes they can be full day stays, like we hosted Kokomo. Some other places are just two and a half or three hours. So those visits are adding up, but it's great to be able to share some of the things that we are doing. We also had four visitors from outside of the country, from Buenos Aires. Painesville City School District was hosting some Fulbright scholars, and they wanted to see some area schools, and so we hosted them for a two-hour tour around our high school. And they were very impressed, and it was also a great opportunity to hear some of the things going on in Buenos Aires. 2,750 are the amount of MacBooks that we have distributed from our teachers and our students at the high school. And to be honest with you, I take this opportunity to recognize our IT department. We have not had any major issues with regards to connectivity or any problems with the MacBooks, knock on wood is right, but it has been a fantastic transition. It was a worry that a lot of our staff, as well as we shared, going into the school year to make sure that connectivity was not going to be an issue. We ran a lot of things and our IT department did a lot of things this summer to make sure of that, and we have had little to no problems with connectivity at the high school. Much larger number, 3,000, 3,087,771, and that is the number of page views in Schoology since the beginning of the school year. So just from this number, you can see our, and this is just at the high school, you can see that our staff has bought into the concept of using our learning management system Schoology and putting the online, putting their content online to make it more accessible for our students. And equally sharing that same idea is 53,521, which is the number of assignments and quiz submissions just at the high school. So again, it shows that our teachers have bought into the idea of Schoology and using that to manage their classroom. 57. We have a great program that is running at Mentor High School led by Ms. Ford, our media specialist. She is doing a great job working with 21 students. And these students are located in the hub every day. Three to four students every period are reporting to our Gen Yes desk. These TAPS, which are technology assisted, assistant projects, are just ways that if a teacher needs assistance, for instance, there was a teacher who was struggling with the airplane in their room. They could put in a TAP, and that student, a student would go to their room and help them with that technology issue. So our students are there to be our first line of IT support. Daily, if you stop by the Gen Yes desk, you will see them working on computers, working on students' computers who come up, they're having an issue, or they need an add-on, or something's not working right on their computer. Our students, the students as part of Gen Yes, are their first line of IT support. Are there some tougher issues that need to go past Gen, the Gen Yes students? Absolutely. Tim Baker is our IT person who's over at the high school, and he's there to offer quick support as well. And if it's something that can't be handled, then the Gen Yes kids working with Ms. Ford give the students a substitute computer for the rest of the day because we don't want them to be without their, excuse me, their learning materials, and they go and take advantage of that MacBook reserve until theirs gets fixed. This is the number of hours that students have been involved in Gen Yes, and this includes the hours that they put in to help us pass out the devices at the beginning of the year. 4.41 is my next number. And 4.41, this was a survey. We worked with Steelcase, who was one of the major providers of our furniture, and they gave a survey to two of our pilot classrooms. And one of the questions asked, asked the students to think about a classroom that they were in last year compared to a renovated classroom. In this classroom, is it easier or harder to be comfortable? And the average score that these 70 students came up with was a 4.41, which was one of the higher, not the highest, but one of the higher ones. But what I liked about that most, the idea of being comfortable, wasn't the physical presence of being comfortable. They also had another question they had to answer on this survey. I want to read for you a couple of their responses, which is, "How do you feel the new classroom has impacted your learning experience?" And again, as when we're talking about making changes, we want to make those changes because of our students. And so student voice means more to me than anything else. So I'm going to give you, out of the, there's 70 responses to this question, two of them were negative. So out of the 70, two were negative. And the negatives were, it causes me to be a little bit more distracted and that I'm not 100% sure where the front of the room is, so I don't know where to turn to learn. And so I thought that was interesting. So those were the two negative. The other 68 were all very positive, so I'd like to read a couple of those. This one student says, "I feel that has benefited me by allowing me to be more collaborative. I am a hands-on style student, and the new renovations have helped me pay attention and be more of an active learner." That active learner is key for us. We talk about the difference between a passive learner and an active learner. Here's another one. "I think it has improved my learning experience because I feel more comfortable in these classrooms. It is a more relaxed environment, and I feel more comfortable contributing to my class." This isn't the idea of feeling physically more comfortable, like, oh, it's a cushy chair. This is the idea that I feel more comfortable with sharing and learning, and that's really important for us as educators. And then here's a third student. "It allows us to do more group work and have discussions that are geared more towards the specific goals in mind of the discussion." And the last one that I wanted to share, I love this one, I swear, this student I give, I don't know who the student is, but I give him a lot of credit because of the whole statement. "I love the new classrooms and technology. It is amazing what our school has done to make information and collaboration more accessible than ever before. I feel like some teachers are more on board with using the technology than others, but I understand this is new for everyone." I love that statement because it is so true. "I am also able to take an online class this year, which I'm really enjoying." So again, I think as we talk about the changes that we've made at the high school, it's important to listen to our students and some of their thoughts that they have about the renovations that we have made. And so I'd like to end as I began, which is talking about Mr. Wilson and talking about money. And so right now, we applied for a carryover amount of $969,490.19. If you recall, our grant was 13.8 million. Of that 13.8 million, about 1.8 million was Kirtland's share of the grant, about just over 12 million was Mentor's share. So this 969,000 isn't a very accurate number, and let me explain why. Just to get to the end number, our carryover amount here in Mentor is just over $350,000 going into this school year. And the reason is, is of that 969,000, about 207,000 is Kirtland's carryover amount. So that takes us down to just about $760,000. Of that, we have about $380,000 worth of expenses from last year. And let me explain where those expenses are. We are still continuing to work with capstone construction on the punch list items, and we're going to continue to ride them to make sure everything is completed just as we want it. And so that is going to be continued. We hold weekly meetings, and we're making sure everything is done just as it needs to be done. We still have technology, working with the technology company, Gudenkopf. They are completing a couple of last punch list items for us. And again, we're going to hold them to make sure everything is done just as we need. We also have Lakeland Management, who did our classrooms. There are some lights that need to be replaced that we're still waiting on, so there's still money that is owed to them. And TDA, who is overseeing all those projects, because we're still expecting them to represent us, they're still owed certain money as well. And so when all is said and done, we have about $350,000 in carryover going into this school year for the Straight A Grant, and the majority of that money is where it exactly needs to be, which is on profession, in professional development. So at this time, as always, I would certainly enjoy and welcome any questions that you have regarding the Straight A Grant.
How's the online learning component working? Because that's something new to the, to the high school.
It is, and I am so glad that you asked the question. So again, remembering that we have two kinds of components of that, which is the health online, that every 10th grader is taking an online course. We have 310 students that have taken the course, and we are, there is a large number of those students who have completed the course. Every two weeks, we go in and meet with students who are struggling. The first, we started this about eight weeks ago, and so the first time that we, about six weeks ago, we've met with them three times. And the first time that we met with them, we had about 70 students who were not up to where they needed to be. They were, they were short of where they needed to be. The next time we went in, it was down to 50 students. Last time we went in, it was down to 40 students. So we're closing the gap and getting the students to where they need to be. Are there struggles? Absolutely. It has been probably the one thing out of the whole grant that we were prepared for, but certainly we are seeing kids struggle at taking online courses. And we expected that, and we welcome it because we think if we can help them through it now, that as they move on past high school, that will be easier for them to take them in the future. And so we're certainly glad that we made this move to take an online course, but there are certainly challenges that come along with that. As far as the Pearson goes, those are the online electives. Similar percentages, anywhere from 18 to 25% of kids who are short of where they need to be, and so we're continuing to work with those students as well to make sure we get them on track.
And how did the students respond? Are you going to wait till the semester is completed to kind of get some feedback on what could be done to make it better, or?
Absolutely, and I think it varies from student to student. As I shared, the one example of the student who was thrilled to be able to take an online course, we certainly have a handful of kids that are welcome the opportunity to take those, but I think some students have also had their eyes opened that they thought online classes were going to be a pushover, all this is going to be so easy. It's not. I mean, it is, it is students having to really work and focus in on the content that they're learning. And so I think some kids were caught a little bit by surprise by that fact.
When you said "we" meet with them, who is "we"?
So we started, and when I say "we," we started as myself, Mr. Luciano, and Mr. Wade, but that has transferred over to Mr. McKnight, the 10th grade unit principal, and the 10th grade counselors. And so we kind of wanted to kind of get out there and work with the students and make sure we understood before we asked the counselors and Mr. McKnight to step in and also help us. They were meeting with us as well from, from day one. We, Mr. Luciano, myself, and Mr. Wade were the ones that kind of took the lead on it, but then, and have turned it over to Mr. McKnight and the counselors.
Are you seeing about the same percentages for students in their senior economics class?
We are, we are. And again, I think where that struggle, where those struggles have come from is, for, to keep everyone up to date on that, they meet Mondays and Wednesdays, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have to report to the hub. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, when they have online coursework or coursework that they're required to complete, some of the students weren't, were struggling with taking that initiative to do the work without an adult watching over them all of the time. And so that's been something that we've worked with. Mr. Wade has worked with the economics teachers on and trying to help and give those students some guidance and support. But if you look at those numbers, as we also look at our other general class, you know, Mr. Wade uses this number of DNF rates, of taking a look at DNF rates. And I know that's probably something that Ms. Miller's, you know, knows about and talks about. New to me is being an elementary guy, not, we don't, we don't look at DNF rates at the elementary school, but, you know, that, that, those DNF rates, we were comparing some of those and looking at the online courses, and they are similar. You know, there are certain kids who are not successful in the regular ed class, so when we talk about percentages of 18 to 25%, I think, I see Ms. Miller shaking her head. I'd love to get her thoughts on it, but, you know, I think that's a similar, I think that's probably a similar rate unfortunately to what we're seeing in some of our, our regular classes. And so that's also something, though, that we want to address. You know, we really want to take a look at that and see why that's happening. Again, having, having to be able to work with Bill, Mr. Wade, Mr. Luciano, and all of the teachers at Mentor High School, though, I have no doubt that we're going to continue to forge forward and continue to lessen those, those DNF rates as well as those failure rates on our online coursework.
I would just say, and Mr. Lynch, you alluded to it, but just the importance of the teaching staff at the high school and how they have really helped everybody on the path. So this is not an easy undertaking for the faint of heart, so to speak, because you're changing for the better, but it's, but it's still a big change, and it can be messy at times. But just to hear the feedback from the teachers that are like, you know what, after the first couple of weeks, we are starting to ease into it, and it's starting to make sense, and, and not that it wasn't making sense, but it just, after time goes on, you see the benefits to the kids, it's really been.
I'm talking about Mr. Wade. I didn't even see Mr. Wade sitting over there.
He snuck in late.
I'm talking about him like he's not even here. Hey, Mr. Wade.[1512.48][1512.48](Laughter). No, honestly, Mr. Wade reminds me, you know, we have these conversations, and again, I have been, the lucky part of taking this position is getting to work closely with Bill and Mr. Luciano and the teaching staff at Mentor High School. I mean, that's been the greatest adventure for me, of getting that opportunity to work with those folks. But, you know, we remind ourselves is that we really, we're about 12 weeks into this, this change. I mean, we spent last year doing what we did and making the physical changes, but the instructional shifts, we're 10 to 12 weeks into this. And to see what, what has gone on at the high school and how the high school staff has responded has been unbelievable. I was part of what I, part of the best staff meeting that I've been a part of last Thursday at the high school, and the discussions and the rich discussions that teachers were having about the rotation model, and it was great. And so we continue to welcome the opportunity to work with the staff to forge forward in the path of blended learning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. I am just going to take a couple minutes to talk about a few things. First thing I'd like to talk about is the quality profile. We recently launched our second quality profile. If you recall from last year, the first time we did our quality profile, it was and still is intended to be a complement to the state report card. If you have not seen the state report card for this year, it's because it's not been released yet. But we went ahead and moved forward with launching our own quality profile report. Last year, we followed a template that most school districts in Ohio use that went to the quality profile. So while the report card is important, and it shows you where you're at, at that place in time in terms of test scores and how the kids are scoring on certain tests in certain grades, it's not a full picture. So the quality profile was designed to complement other things that our community values. And the, and the quality profile that we use in Mentor was designed, was built from feedback from our community. So some of the surveys that we've done just recently, the past couple months, and even last year, in terms of getting feedback from our community and our staff, built a quality profile. I'm not going to go through the quality profile page by page, but we did send it out as an electronic link. You can find it on our webpage, and we do have printed copies as well, but it has community data in there on surveys. We talk about our program of studies, obviously, our Straight A initiatives and everything that Mr. Wade and his staff has going on at the high school. We have best practices in teaching and learning that our whole staff, K-12, is undertaking. We do a lot in Mentor, and I'm proud to say with the arts programs for our kids, so it's well-rounded. It's not always athletics, but it's other co-curriculars and extracurriculars. Also athletics are important, too. Fiscal stewardship, so we talk about the fifth perfect audit. We're up to five, right? Fifth perfect audit. Fifth perfect audit.
This is Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Jezlin.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tutt.
Yes.
Let's recommend the Board of Education approve the supplemental appropriations presented in Exhibit Seven dash E.
Subtle.
Sacked.
Please cover roll, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Jezlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Reiner.
Yep.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Tutt.
Yes.
And that completes my items this evening. Next on the agenda, the unfinished business.
This is where we need to schedule...
A new business. New business? Next meeting?
Schedule a work session.
Work session?
Yeah, still be a work session?
Yes, we recommend a work session with possible, uh, board action also, which is permissible technically, be a special meeting. Topic would be, uh, future revenue needs, uh, session four.
Do we wanna look at the first week in December?
Yes.
I'm clear on Tuesday, December first? Perfect for you?
I have plans on the, I, I'm busy on the first and the third.
How long will you be out of town?
You're out of town just that day?
First, Tuesday, and the third? Oh, you're both out of town?
All three days.
Okay.
Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Uh, we need to be mindful of our deadline of the sixteenth, correct?
Correct.
What about Thursday, the third?
Good, good.
I have, I have to work that night, but...
We need you.
What about Monday, the thirtieth? Is that good for anyone? November thirtieth?
Monday, the thirtieth.
No, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Sorry, let's just... Saturday, the twenty-eighth, in the early part of the day?
Does anybody wanna do it Saturday morning? Is that Thanksgiving weekend?
Thanksgiving weekend.
Are people out of town?
Perhaps the next...
Not good.
Three misses.
Saturday, the fifth?
Thursday morning, AM, how's that? The third. No?
Not good.
Okay, since we're having trouble finding a date, can I, if it's not too soon, could I suggest the twenty-third, twenty-fourth?
December?
No.
November, I'm sorry.
Even though it's next week, it would...
Is this okay for me?
I can do the thirds out for me, I can do the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third, unfortunately, I have a conflict I can't resolve.
How about the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fourth, I could do. I'm good on the twenty-fourth after five.
Mm-hmm, that would work for me.
Five o'clock meeting, I'll take about, uh, fifteen minutes. Half hour to get ready, I could do like six o'clock.
What about six to five then?
Yeah.
Six to five?
Is that...
Yeah, that's fine.
Six to five or six PM?
I like sooner. Everybody's here and...
The purpose will be to continue our discussions with possible action.
Mr. Shaw, you want us to tag it to like six-thirty, so you're not, I mean, is it...
That's fine.
Six-thirty?
Yeah. Gives everybody a chance to eat.
As long as it's not AM.
Six-thirty?
Then I'll want to go dig in for his cookies I wanted to bring you.
Yeah, we got cookies. Brownies.
Cookies. Six-thirty PM on November twenty-fourth.
Conversation.
Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. Mm-hmm.
Work session. Thank you. That'll be great.
It's good, then we can get to your table.
Next on the agenda? Gary McColick.
Hi, Mr. Tuttel, Board. My name's Bobby Ulbrich, and, uh, I wanna raise an issue that my son has dealt with for the last two and a half years. Uh, he's a football player. He's played for Mentor High School. Unfortunately, he would transfer to, uh, Lake Catholic after the fifth game this year. And I know how important bullying is from student to student, but I think the board needs to look at the bullying of, uh, the head football coach and his fellow coaches towards certain players. Um, this is something that started freshman year. Uh, three situations happened. Finally, I went to Trivisano. After that, from what I understand from a high-ranking official just recently, uh, Trivisano did not appreciate it and basically did things to my son because of me. And I spoke to, uh, probably about a month ago, before I transferred Kyle, which made me determine that he was gonna be transferred. I spoke to a volunteer coach. Uh, my son did conditioning, or he did practice conditioning, and I was there to pick him up. And he said, he was like, Dad, can I go out and kick some more? So, I was like, okay. So, I went to go shag balls, saw this, uh, coach on the field. He asked me how things were going, 'cause he kinda knew what was going on. Um, and I said, you know what, it really sucks. And he's like, why? And I said, uh, well, you know, it, it's not, you know, it's not getting any better for Kyle. And, um, he said, do you have any idea why this might be? And I said, well, I do, but I hope it's not what I'm thinking. And he asked me, he goes, well, what is it? I said, well, it's all, probably all because of me. And he looked at me and pointed his finger in my face, and he goes, [BLEEP] it is. It's all because of you. Your son's getting in the middle of it. And he goes, if that was my kid, I would transfer him to Lake right now. And after that, um, I transferred him. And he loved it, you know, it was his decision, final decision. I sent him to, uh, B and I went to visit Lake, and I didn't think he would like it, but after we walked out there, he loved it. And we were talking on the ride home, and I said, well, hey, you know, it's all your decision. And he's like, okay, I wanna go. I said, well, just keep in mind, you gotta wear a uniform. He's like, I had no problem with, with, uh, wearing a uniform, Dad. And later, he goes, you know what, Dad? It feels like an elephant's been lifted off my shoulders. And I heard him laugh more in that two weeks, and giggle more in those two weeks than he did in that two and a half years, because of so much pressure that was put on him. And there needs to be checks and balances done on these coaches. 'Cause I went to Casella. He and I sat down with Trivisano in January. Trivisano walked out, ten to fifteen minutes into the meeting, looked at me, said, you don't know what the, you don't know what the [BLEEP] you're talking about, walked out. I looked at Casella, I said, you're serious, or you're gonna let him walk out? He goes, it's not gonna get any better. And, um, you know, I went to, um, I wrote a five-page email to OHSAA. I sent it to Mr. Wade, sent it to Mr. Tuttel, um, sent it to Casella, um, and sent it to Mr. Miller. And, uh, out of all those people, I did not hear one word from anybody stating, you know, we're gonna look into this, uh, we're gonna take this serious. And, you know, I feel this is something that needs to be done. And I'm fighting this because I don't want another kid or his parents to go through what we did in the last two and a half years. Kyle's junior season was totally ruined because of his coaching staff. And, you know, he had to sit out the last five games because that was OHSAA rules. And, um, you know, unfortunately, you know, he's gonna have to really shine next year, his senior year, uh, he's gonna be recognized by colleges. So, I just wanna bring this to the attention of the board and hope something will get done, because something needs to be changed, just for the sake of the students. And ironically, I remember being on the field with my son when he was in eighth grade, before he went to ninth grade. grade. I was talking about, uh, two parents who went through this situation. And I thought to myself, there's no way my son's going to be picked on like this, because he's a good student, he's a real hard worker. And unfortunately, you know what, I didn't, I didn't heed their words. And, uh, my son went through that, and I can tell you right now, it was pure hell. And, you know, my son loves it. He's being, um, very welcomed by the coaching staff of Lake, and he can't wait for next year, and, uh, the coaches can't wait for, for next year either. So, uh, it ended up being a positive experience through Lake, but, uh, I don't think we should have went that far, because God knows I can't afford him going to Lake Catholic. That's why he went to Mentor High. So...
Well, thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
And if anybody wants an email, I'm glad to send it to you.
Uh, next on the agenda, we're going to, we'll need a motion to move to executive session, potential to discuss the potential sale of district property and competitive bidding, as well as compensation of public employees.
Sub move.
Sub move.
Please call roll, Mr. Wilson.
Ms. Jezling.
Yes.
Mrs. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Tutt.
Yes. We will be returning. There will be no vote when we return, so certainly up to if they want to stay. The seats warm while we're gone. That might seat, because you don't have to.